A lot of gray areas and a lot of unknowns. But I did want to point out to you some facts about the area. A few years back, Napa Solano Audubon published this lovely book, Napa Solano, you know, Solano Breeding Birds. And if you look at this book, you'll find that there are forty confirmed species that use the area of the Collinsville Montezuma Slough for breeding area. That includes ducks like mallards, blue winged teal, and my personal favorite, the cinnamon teal. There's also songbirds that use that area as well. In addition to the twenty confirmed species, there's, or sorry, forty confirmed species, there's another twenty probable species of birds that are using that as breeding area. That's a lot of diversity in a rather small area. And I would hate to see that beautiful variety get narrowed down by a lot of development to where the area is only useful to your crows, pigeons, and Canadian geese. So, again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Mr. Fred Lehman.
My name is Fred Lehman. I'm the President and Business Agent of Plumbers and Steam Fitters Local 343, representing workers in the piping and plumbing industry in Napa and Solano Counties. I would like to recognize all the extra time you and staff have spent on this. And I think that that just speaks to the extraordinary opportunity that we have. You know, the fact that you're spending all this time, I think that means you recognize the extraordinary opportunity we have for expanded economic development in the county. Now, I'm sitting here checking my phone and thinking about a few things, and some of it's the phone calls I gotta return when I get back to my office. Probably about fifteen of them, a few of them from members working down, all the way down 680 in Silicon Valley, about twelve of them working out of state. And probably all gonna be the same, the same conversation where I try and look in my crystal ball and figure out what I'm gonna have a job for them here at home so they can spend, spend the night in their own beds during the week. The timeline for this project remains viable. That's been stated and documented. Sounds like the county, the county can approve or reject each project as it comes along. This is simply just moving it down the road to keep it, keep it viable, keep, keep the hope alive that we can, we can do something here. It sounds like the proponents came to an agreement with staff and, but continually adding last minute language will not permit the project to move forward due to the timeframe required. And I just ask that the Board support the language agreed to by staff and advance legislation consistent with the values of that deal. Thank you.
Tracy Rogers-Brant.
Hi, my name is Tracy Rogers-Brant. I want to thank the Board for your service and for allowing me to speak today. I am an Associate Director on the Contra Costa Resource Conservation District Board. I'm also the newly hired Director of Greening Programs and Projects for a nonprofit called Forester.org, which has boots on the ground in Contra Costa County, Alameda County, and Solano County. I want to invite the Board to become Earth Caretakers. I want to invite the Board to refuse to rely on a 2008 EIR and to become a tipping point for the Bay Delta Bioregion to enable a bioregional revolution where humans return to our sacred role as members and stewards of the web of life. I have studied the Poli crisis for over two years and followed California forever since extractive and destructive maneuvering since inception. They are not aligned to a nature-based future supportive of all life. I'm gonna read an excerpt from a new book called The Earth Caretaker's Way. Heroes. Where are the heroes? Who are they? Our earth asks, our animals ask, our trees and oceans ask. Truth can be very painful. The time has arrived for truth to action. The time of heroes has arrived. Be a voice for the animals who need your help. If you see a wrong being done, speak up. It is better to act than to not say or do something to right a wrong and fail that animal. If you know better, then be the one that will do better. Wake up and find the place inside and change course. There is no time to wait. The time is now and past. The moment of greatness and purpose and wonder has arrived. In these times, you will find out who you are and find your place in the battle for our earth. It's time to be a free thinker and for words to become action, this is the Earth Human Time. There's no other higher honor than defending our earth.
Ma'am, that's time. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay. Next up is Michael Hayes.
Yes, thank you, Board. Michael Hayes, Benishire resident. I grew up in Vallejo, a Vallejo native. I wanted to say that a pivotal moment in Vallejo's history was the closure, closure of Mare Island Naval Shipyard. And the city of Vallejo's been a fiasco since that point. It's never recovered. And so I'm struck by this development project, this Collinsville Shipyard proposal, to stick a shipyard out in the middle of nowhere, where there's no infrastructure, where there's no people, where there's no homes, there's nothing. And this is a slap in the face to the city of Vallejo and the residents of Vallejo and residents of other cities in the Bay Area that have traditionally been shipbuilding hubs, like Hunters Point, Richmond, and so even Alameda, which probably would be an ideal location for some of the large container ships they're talking about. But what is clear to me is that if there's gonna be a shipyard, it needs to really come back to Mare Island. Mare Island is the ideal location for this. It's a historical, um, location for shipbuilding in the Bay Area, going back to eighteen hundreds. The, I'm listening to the unions here, and Vallejo was home to a lot of union halls. And my question is, where were, where was the union leadership when Mare Island shut down back in the nineteen nineties? They were flapping in the breeze, and now they're standing behind this, this development project in Collinsville. Why aren't they supporting Vallejo? I'm very angry with the unions because they are typical of the, sort of the poor quality analysis that goes on in this country for development projects.
It's time, sir. Thank you. Next up is Mr. Medvitz.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a rancher. The eastern edge of the study zone is the fence line between the study zone and my We have thirty-seven hundred acres there, and obviously we're very concerned about any development or any efforts that would provide emissions that would damage our grapes. We have a fifty acre vineyard that does very well. Market's not good now. So we're very concerned about that. But I wanna change the subject. Break things and move fast. If you don't understand what's going on here, or if the population, the unions, whatever, this is not about building ships or jobs or whatever. This is about breaking our regulatory structure, breaking our county's ability to regulate our, and protect our environment and our resources, to break our orderly growth initiative. Among other things that have been broken in the process have been the families of farmers who resisted and who chose not to sell. This is a much larger issue. I urge you all to read Mr. Andreessen's manifesto. It's online, a techno-optimist manifesto, in which he describes enemies of technology as stakeholder involvement of democratic processes. It's there.
It's, that's the time, Mr. Medvitz.
So, I urge you, one last comment, to resist the state involvement in our land use and to vote no on this legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Medvitz. Mr. Dees, Jeff Dees.
I'm Jeff Dees. I live in Vallejo, and I didn't come with these comments in mind. I've learned so much this morning. So much has changed. I really have an appreciation for what the county staff and for what the Board of Supervisors have been confronting and dealing with. I used to work in rural development, and I know these things aren't easy, but I don't think I've ever seen anything like this. We thought this was done. But we have also great state legislatures, and apparently they've said to you, if you say no, we say no, there is no special exception. So I want to offer a few perspectives on this. Okay, we're talking about a site selection RFP. This is not a federal government site selection RFP. This is a site selection RFP from Sironic Technologies. They are a startup, three-year-old company. Yes, they've raised a bit of money, but they don't even have any contracts for any major ship development at this point. If these people become controllers of this property, they may find out, as they get halfway into this, that they're not the most successful competitors for this new drone ship that everybody wants to have. They'll be gone, they'll be gone, and we'll be stuck holding whatever mess they've left behind, except not like Mare Island, where at least it was the United States government that had to try and clean that up and still hasn't finished. It'll be ours to clean up because they'll be bankrupt and gone. So we need to think about that and the way they're dealing with us here. Okay, um, sorry, this is off the top of my head here. They want to rejigger the, the coral. Well, you know, coral's an endangered species, and we really don't, obviously, they've, that reason that parcel is that way, that's where the low property is, that's all in the valley. What they want to do is stretch this along the entire most sensitive part, which is what's right on the Sacramento River. By the way, the Sacramento River Channel there is thirty feet deep, not forty feet deep.
It's time, sir. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Persons.
It's hard. There's a lot of emotion going on right now, and being reduced to speaking so briefly won't impart the emotion that I'm feeling at this moment. I have been, for the past forty years, advocating for this county in economic development and national security. And it's disheartening to hear a group, an audience, that is cavalier and disregarding to our national security when it is what? Economic development is a world that most of the folks in here have not walked in. And as a county, I find our approach and not being open-minded and curious to the opportunities that come our way extremely disheartening. I am in full support of California Forever's Shipyard Project.
Folks, hey, she let you speak, you let her speak. We don't do that in this.
It is disheartening to me how we have vilified business, the very backbone of what our nation was built on.
Mr. Mayhood.
Hello, I'm Aidan Mayhood. I'm also Ria Vista and neighbor of Al in the, in the Montezuma Hills. Here's, here's a quote, two quotes from one of the major investors of Sironic Technologies, Peter Thiel, and this will give you an idea of his ethic. Quote, "I no longer believe that freedom and democracy are compatible." Stands pretty, you know, self-explanatory. Here's a second one. "Since 1920, the vast increase in welfare beneficiaries and the extension of the franchise to women have rendered the notion of democracy into an oxymoron." So giving the right to women to vote and welfare benefits. Okay. So proponents of this project seek to use the 1989 Collinsville Montezuma Hills area development study. However, the study says that it questions the operational suitability of the site for a container terminal port in view of its remoteness for main highway and rail lines and the depth of the Sacramento River Channel. This study was done in 1989 so that the county could pass redevelopment bonds to fund infrastructure in the area because twenty-five years of industrial energy there fizzled. It stopped, so the county wanted to do something. And, and the county actually, what was happening over those twenty-five years was nothing related to shipbuilding whatsoever. It had to do with petrochemical plants and refineries, had to do with steel production, nuclear power, coal power, nothing to do with shipbuilding. Eighty-one percent of water industrial zone land at that time was used for petroleum refineries. And so that was the purpose of putting that zoning there, not for shipbuilding. And when the county tried to pass those redevelopment bonds back in 1989, they were sued and they lost in the appellate court because they called that area blighted. And you've seen the pictures, the area is not blighted. And so I like the county's recommendations they've made, but I also want them to consider having a study of feasibility of shipbuilding at Mare Island and Ria Vista and to include conservation easements along the properties that they seek to develop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayhood. Next is Danny Barrett.
My name is Danny Barrett. I'm a resident of Dixon. I'm a, been in Solano County for over twenty years, also a member of Local 343, the Plumbers and Steam Fitters. I'm, I'd like to express my strong support for this shipyard and the legislation that's going along with it. The shipyard could potentially create over ten thousand jobs, well-paying jobs, long-term skilled jobs for local residents. I think one of the gentlemen just spoke about some of the students that are graduating, blue collar jobs. Some of these guys could, and gals, could have a career out there for their whole life and, and a shorter commute. I can attest to two, three, four-hour commutes. I've spent a lot of time in the windshield and missed a lot of family opportunity. So, it's, I, I mean, the, just the, the family time I've lost over that is astronomical. I got a twelve-year-old son now. I mean, he could potentially be working out there eventually. So, anyway, this project could potentially be a huge economic boost for Solano County. So I just, I hope you guys consider it. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Barilu.
They have about four billion dollars in investment money just sitting there in cash. The only things they have built so far has been small autonomous surface vessels. Their target sales is to the U.S. Navy, but they haven't actually sold any yet that I can determine. They were talking about it. Okay, they built all of their crafts so far at their warehouse in Austin, Texas. Everything they've built is small enough to be moved around on a boat trailer. Now, they recently bought a shipyard in Franklin, Louisiana, that previously built ships for offshore servicing. So they're capable of building the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot design that Sironic has on the drawing boards. Now, I spent twenty-two years in the Navy. All of that time was in repairing advanced combat direction systems. So what these little ships are, or these little boats are intended for is really pretty cool stuff, and I recognize the Link sixteen and everything that it's going to go into. But they're not ships. And just like we was talking about earlier, they're saying, oh, well, we need to start putting these in the water by 2027. How are they gonna do that? Because these are small boats. The only big thing they're going to put in the water is gonna happen out of Franklin, Louisiana. They could conceivably, yes, build a big warehouse out there, and yes, build a launch ramp and put in some more of these thirty-foot and less experimental craft. This is simply California Forever's foot in the door. Every person you hear here talking about the good things about California Forever is someone who works for them or hopes to make money out of this. They're not considering all the ancillary problems.
Chairtime.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Don Lipari?
Collinsville, I'd like to do a massive amount of dredging to get a boat to float out of there. You may also damage the supply in the wa, the delta. You may screw it up and have saltwater going back into the, into the delta. Bridges are too low to transfer with a ship. Sonic had a, a drone test, and it was a disaster recently. That's the one, I guess, that they're talking about. Shipbuilding in the U.S. is limited to, there are, Lori, I hear that, that you guys are basically trying to push this through really quick. I've heard you guys talk about it today. I don't think it's a really good idea to be in a hurry because if you don't think this through and there are problems, that it's gonna back, basically, it's gonna come back and haunt you. Also, when it comes to the Flannery Group, it's, they just want someone else to pay. That's the billionaire way. One, they have everything to gain. They can have roads rebuilt, they can have electricity and water piped in, they can have their property rezoned and sell parcels because it's been rezoned and electricity brought in, like I said. This is also, in my opinion, this is my opinion, and this is why I just don't think it's a good idea for you to move forward at a big racing rate. If you screw up the delta, it's gonna come back and haunt you, and you guys are gonna be in deep trouble.
Next up is Jim Bartsch.
I'm Jim Bartsch, and I can see Collinsville from my house. Oh, on Grizzly Bear Island, one night he was born in a hut made of sticks where they ground the acorns. It was there he first met his Julie so true, and he rode her about in his tule canoe. Sing and roll away, row, or the water's so blue, like a feather will float in a tule canoe. Sing and roll away, row, or the water's so blue, like a feather will float in a tule canoe. He was first on this water to build boats on land at a basket weave shipyard where Collinsville stands. Then he'd hold Julie's hand and slip into the slough, and a night sail her round in his tule canoe. Through the cat tails and catfish and red wings they'd glide, with his hollow reed whistle and her by his side. While the stars they looked down on his Julie so true, and dance in her eyes in his tule canoe. Sing and roll away, row, or the water's so blue, like a feather will float in a tule canoe. Sing and roll away, row, or the water's so blue, like a feather will float in a tule canoe. How the years have been kind, now it's 2025. We should honor the past, keeping spirits alive. Not the U.S.'s navy, nor Columbus II. No, there's no better craft than a tule canoe. Through the ripples of history and rising high tides, we could all look much deeper into each other's eyes. We're all in the same boat with the same river view. So I'm paddling and channelling, the me walks and you. Sing and roll away, row, or the water's so blue, like a feather will float in a tule canoe.
Chairtime.
Sing and roll away, row, or the water's so blue, like a feather will float in a tule canoe.
Thank you, Mr. Bartsch. Ms. Bartsch? Is it like an encore?
Yesterday, all my troubles seemed so far away. Now it looks as though they're here to stay. I blame it all on Flannery. Suddenly, it's not half the farm it used to be. Sudden, there's a shadow hanging over me. Oh, yesterday came suddenly. What we used to grow, as you know, was golden hay. He sued someone wrong. Now I long for yesterday. Yesterday, Flannery came and took our land away. Now tomorrow seems to look so gray. Oh, I believe in yesterday. Yesterday, all my troubles seemed so far away. Now it looks as though they're here to stay. I blame it all on Flannery.
Thank you. Roberto Valdez.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My, I'm a longtime resident. Sorry, I dropped my stuff. I'm carrying a lot today. Thank you. I just want to say, you know, I'm here for, with several hats, okay? You know me, I've been here thirty-five years. I'm from Bacca Bill. I appreciate all the work you do on behalf of the interests of the county, especially for Mr. Mashburn and Mr. Supervisor John Vasquez. I know you have the best interest in mind, too. You know, we all have to discuss and, but anyway, I'm here because I don't think, and I'm, I'm not convinced of all the data that I've heard from City of Sassoon, from the, this group billionaires that are coming in to take over our county politically, economically, that they are in the right path. You know, they, all they want is money. They, all they want their interest, all they want their payback. I'm here because I don't think we need this project. We are fine. I've heard about the, we need this project because of potential war. We're not at war. Do we want to be in war with the Chinese or other countries? No. We're not that kind of a country. I believe it was, it's a democracy, regardless of what you hear. And we're being impacted severely by Washington. But I want to say to you is that I don't believe that, that what I've heard from City of, that they are going back, they're worried about going bankrupt or something. Vallejo survived. They went through bankruptcy. They don't have a shipyard there. They have the place. They can do what they want with Mare Island. Do the people there want a, a, a shipyard? No. You know, I'm here because, also because I, I am the, the chair, current chair for the Napa Solano Audubon Society.
Chairtime.
Speaking on behalf of sixty-two birds, especially the birds that we, the northern hairier, the Swinton.
Thank you, Roberto. It is time.
So you hear it, okay?
We heard you.
I'm totally against it. We don't need it.
We got you.
Why give them the time?
Jim DeClo.
Hello, I'm Jim DeClo, and I've sent you quite a bit of paper in the last few days, about forty pages. Let me use my one minute and fifty-three seconds to summarize. There are credible reports from consultants in the audience that this is not a suitable shipbuilding for large ships. For the small boats that Sironic, I don't know, but this is entirely unsuitable for large ships. There's a credible threat to the drinking water for half of the state of California. There is. There is a proposal. If you build the whole Flannery, this is a commitment of over $200 billion of infrastructure. These are not risks to take lightly. Let me point out that this was put in... This was done in a smoke-filled room. This is done in a back room. It's now latte-filled rooms, I'm sure, but this was crafted by special interests. This is crafted by Flannery. Let me be nice to them and just say that they're controversial. They... There's an African proverb that if you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together. If you want to go fast, go together. We were not on board. The community was not brought along with this. This is a special interest by out-of-town billionaires, done at the last minute. I am a veteran of 40 years of term papers that were written the night before. I got this major piece of legislation 20 minutes ago. So there's no paper on this. I spent the weekend looking at the old EIR. The old EIR is entirely ineffective. It's entirely insufficient. If you're going to waive SEQA, waive SEQA. Don't be hypocrites. Just say, "We're waiving it. We're not depending on 2008 EIR." That isn't good enough. The question is, are you for your citizens or are you for...
Chairtime.
Or are you for special interests?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is Marilyn Farley.
Marilyn Farley, Solano County Orderly Growth Committee and myself and to my friends on the board. You wouldn't vote for this if it weren't for the billionaires pulling the strings and putting pressure on you. From start to finish, there has been no transparency from California Forever. They have shown us, the public and you, the county, no respect. Do you think this will change in the future? You haven't seen a project. You're being asked to void all your normal procedures. You've heard there are 10,000 jobs, yet the ironic information I've seen says the plant will be fully automated. You have no documentation about the actual number. You don't know what will happen to the Sacramento River. You don't know what will happen to air quality. You don't know how this action will intersect with another of the state's proposals to take up to 65% of our barriers of water. Don't succumb to this pressure. If you say yes to this, what else will you be asked to say yes to in the future? You do not have an action item on this agenda. Can you explain to the public by what authority you can take any action today? Say no.
Next up is Mr. Berman.
Thank you. I promise I won't sing.
Thank you, Bob.
No, singing was great, but you haven't heard me sing. Anyway, I'm Bob Berman, represent Solano Orderly Growth Committee. And really quickly here, simply, we oppose the state legislation that would override Solano County land use control. And clearly, this proposed legislation overrides land use control. We also oppose the lack or concern about the lack of transparency in the entire process. We oppose any override of the Orderly Growth Initiative or, as mentioned in the legislation, Measure T. That's just bad policy. Also oppose the use of the 2008 general plan EIR. That was a program EIR. It did not look at specific issues that are related to this proposal, and it certainly did not look at any relocation of those lands designated water-dependent... Within the water-dependent industrial boundary. I guess in the words of a former First Lady, just say no. Send a strong message to our local Assembly member and state senator that this is not the way to proceed, and the county opposes this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I understand we have some callers online. Can you ask and see if any want to make a public comment?
Caller's on the line. If you wish to speak on Agenda Item Number 22, please press star 3 to raise your hand. I have four hands up, sir.
Okay.
All right, caller on the line with phone number ending in 30. Please press star 6 to unmute yourself and state your name if you wish. And a reminder that we do for every... For all callers on the line, there's a 30-second time delay between the live stream and...
Yeah, hi. My name is Jim Wonderman. I'm the president and CEO of the Bay Area. And I'm here to talk about the region, the regional perspective on this, and I've been in this job for 21 years. And I'm also the chairman of the Water Emergency Transportation Authority, or SFABberi. And anyone who knows me well knows for years I've been speaking about the frustration of not being able to build our own ships. You know, the vessels that serve Vallejo, every day are built in Washington State. Nothing wrong with Washington, but, you know, I've been talking about bringing shipbuilding back. That was part of our history, and nobody knows it better than the folks in Solano County. My dad served in World War II on Liberty ships that were built right here, actually was from New York, that served on Mare Island, and talked about it as a kid growing up. And, you know, I believe our country has reached a moment where we actually need to do something different and get back into shipbuilding again. This is the most significant regional economic development project I've ever seen in over 20 years in this job. It is a huge opportunity. I realize, you know, a lot is being asked of you. The staff have done a tremendous job to try to thread the needle here to make sure that we don't stop looking at this incredible opportunity in the face, and at the same time, we protect the board's ability to say no to any project of, you know, that doesn't meet the requirements of this county. So I think this could be Solano's big moment. I know there's, you know, obviously, strong feelings on both sides of this, but, you know, try to go back to the agreement that was negotiated between your staff and the project proponents on this and keep the ball going forward. There's going to be a lot more to deal with in the legislature.
Chairtime.
But...
That's time, sir. Thank you.
Caller with phone number ending in 44. Please press star 6 to unmute yourself and state your name if you wish. You have two minutes.
My name is Uri Eliahu, Chief Executive for NGO Incorporated. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, fellow supervisors, and thank you to the staff. We are an engineering firm practices, practicing in the earth sciences and other specialties in civil engineering. NGO, our firm, has been headquartered in the Bay Area since our founding 54 years ago with a presence in Solano County, a physical presence for over 30 years. We've provided the engineering for nearly 2,000 private and public projects in Solano County and for well over 10,000 projects in the Bay Area. We're also working on dozens of maritime projects from Seattle to San Diego and throughout the Pacific. The site in the water-dependent industrial zone is uniquely suited for maritime uses. It's adjacent to the Sacramento River Deepwater Channel. It has direct access to the Pacific Ocean. It's in an unpopulated area. It's free of active earthquake faults and any significant contamination. It has access to the necessary utilities, and it will not impact saltwater intrusion in the area and would not create a need for an additional gate. We've been working on the redevelopment of Mare Island since 2000. We had an office there when it was more active. We're still out there working, doing engineering. Mare Island has about 100 acres zoned for industrial, whereas the project Gondor, RFP, requests expandability to 1,500 acres. The industrial waterfront at Mare Island is contaminated. The cleanup wouldn't be economically feasible, but more importantly, it could not be accomplished within any reasonable timeframe. With all our work for the military, we keenly understand firsthand, I might say, the urgency for shipbuilding and the national directive for new capacity. In order for this site, this is...
Sir, that's time. I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Caller with phone number ending in 84. Please press star 6 to unmute yourself, state your name if you wish, and you have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you to the supervisors. This is Charlene Schmidt from Vacaville. Thank you to the supervisors who acknowledged the irresponsibility of voting on this item that is being crammed through without time for clear comprehension and transparency. I'll state my opposition to moving forward with this, fully understanding that if the county does not approve it, we still face the overreach of Newsom and his support. That will be my next letter. For the moment now, multiple environmental safety impacts, the water, the lithium, the pollution, et cetera, they cannot be mitigated. Making a change to the land, to our Delta region, cannot be allowed. Overwriting Measure T is also a direct assault on the Solano County voters that passed this measure by 70.85%. This is the will of the people. The impatience of entitled wealth should not be catered to. We have a process that has been repeatedly been challenged by the same elite entities as the Flannery Group works to expand Sassoon city limits. I believe this entire shipyard project is created to create a false need for further development by Flannery. As we've seen, federal funding is dispersed on a whim. It's not guaranteed under our current president, and he calls wolf with the urgent national security as a reason for Americans to relinquish our rights. Please do not validate this cry by supporting this activity in our precious wetlands of the Delta. As a state employee, I totally value the worker bees behind all of this that have put in hours through the night to make it as understandable and transparent, but the priorities of the entitled wealth behind this chaos should not be made their crisis.
Caller with phone number ending in 40. Please press star 6 to unmute yourself, state your name if you wish, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Rich. I live in Rio Vista, and I just want to say that what we need to do here is we need to be practical for a moment. China builds 1,000 ships a year. In the United States, we build five. In 1980, we had 4 billion, I think 4.4 billion people in America in the United... I'm sorry, in the world. And today, we have 8.1 billion. We've doubled in our capacity on this earth. We need space. We need to do the right thing. We need to build, and we need to continue to progress. So this is what progress looks like. It's not a hostile takeover, and it's about doing the right thing for a progressive community that is a united country. We need to make room for us all. No one here wants war, but more importantly, we need to make sure that we are available and we have the capacity to defend ourselves and defend our rights. Making, I think, the commute in Brentwood, that is the worst commute in the nation, that's right across the water. We need to do something about this. We've got people living on the streets. We've got people who need housing. We've got people who need jobs. We need to do the right thing. We need to move forward. That's all I want to say.
Sir, that's all?
All right. That would be the conclusion of public comment then at this point, and I'm going to take it back in the hands of the board. So in doing that, James, can I have you put up that last slide of yours with the questions for the board? The first question being, do we support the legislation? If you can. Thank you. So this is one of those instances where the board's not taking this particular action or asking for a vote. This is an opportunity for the board to make a statement with regard to support or non-support of proposed legislation and to help guide our state legislators in their endeavors and with what they're doing. And so to that end, I would open it to the board for comments if anybody has any. And if nobody does, then I guess I can kick it off.
So wait, I'm confused. So this piece of paper that I got today, that's what, five or six pages?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just want to make sure that I'm talking about...
That's the one we're talking about right now.
That's what we're talking about. So...
And I would remind everybody that that's not the final draft. It's still... It's still... There's nothing that holds anybody to this. This is just the latest we got in email.
So the question then is, are we liking where they're going with this? If they have... If we...
That's the question.
Okay, that... Well, that... No, that's what I'm trying to figure out because... All right, how do I... Let me just...
And it's not really where they're going. This has to be in print in...
Right, in a couple hours.
A couple hours. 20 minutes.
The problem is, I don't... I can maybe handle this language, but I don't want the project. So that's what I'm trying to figure out. How do I split that baby? Because we're not... We're not building ships. No, no, no. Think about it. We just heard it was drones. Think about what Ukraine was able to do with drones. I really think... And it even mentions it in here in the language. Hold on, let me find it. It talks about having... Not having the right glasses on always helps. It talks about right here that America faces a major shipbuilding challenge as the People's Republic of China now builds more than 1,000 commercial and Navy ships every year while America only builds five. But it doesn't say what the five actually are. Is it commercial? So we have Oakland, we have L.A., we see the big rectangular prisms that bring in all our stuff that comes from China and other places like that. Is that what we're looking at building? Or are we looking at building this? What are we looking at building? Or are we going to use drones? Because I see that as what the... To be honest with you, what the next kind of fight's going to be. And I think Ukraine did a fabulous job when they took out some of Putin's stuff like that. I love that, what they did. That was great. I didn't want anybody to get hurt, but that's not the point. The point is law. So here's my question, is that if I can tolerate what is written in the current edification right here, then what does that mean for everything here? I'm trying to figure out, how do I split the baby? Because I don't want the project, but I'm really afraid that Gavin Newsom's going to come and do something, even though he doesn't know where Solano County is, because he never comes to visit us.
I don't have an answer for you myself.
Okay. I'll attempt to answer that. You do not have a project before you. What you have is a discussion of legislation that would then mandate you to do certain things with your general plan. As a project applicant, they will come forward with a project application, at which point in time you will then have a project before you. You do not have one here now before you, right? So there's nothing... The bill provides parameters...
Okay.
...with regards to... Because I do want to address one question or one statement that somebody said with regards to housing. There is no housing. There is some support services, but we did not include anything for residential in this particular area. So what this bill tells you to do is go forth, study, and by the end of 2026, amend the shape, if it is all amendable, and actually zone it. Right now, under the general plan, it is designated, but it is still zoned agricultural. So that's the one step that needs to happen in order for any development to occur on that property.
And you...
But it sounds as like the shape is not a good thing to make, and it kind of changes to, because it's a hill, correct?
Yes, but it has to be studied. Is there a possibility for...
So we're just talking, it would be studying... Because as much as I tried to absorb all this, that didn't click in. Okay, because it didn't say the hill needs to be studied. No, I'm just teasing. So, okay, go ahead, Bill.
I just wanted to add, I mean, part of what you see in the bill is you're going to have the ability to develop zoning standards, and that will include getting more specific about the types of uses that are allowed. The bill does have some reference to uses, and one of the criticisms we had of the bill was it started to sound like it was maybe a partial zoning ordinance, but it's really not. But you will have the ability through what's in the language in the bill to do more detailed zoning, and that's part of the process.
Okay.
Supervisor Vasquez, sir.
Yes. Boy, there's a lot here. There always has been a lot. So when you look at the shape, the shape's got nothing to do with any studies. The shape was simply a recommendation I made in 2008 as it came before the Board of Supervisors. I said, "Just take the hills out and show us the buildable space on flat ground." That's how the shape occurred. It wasn't... wasn't through any kind of science or study. It was simply a recommendation I made, and the board agreed to it. And originally, it wasn't fourteen hundred acres or fifteen, it was twenty-five hundred. But one of the applicants told me I couldn't make it smaller, so I wanted to prove to them that I could make it smaller, and we made it smaller. We took a thousand acres away and zoned it ag. That's the reason it's, it's what it is today. So, if you're going to blame anybody for the shape and, and the amount of land that's available, it's me. You can do that.
Well, then, we do blame you.
We blame me. I'll take it. But there was, there was others that had to vote for it, but they're not here anymore. But given the legislation that's before us and all the work that's been done with it, I can support, as it's been presented to us, given the fact that it has timelines and it has assurances on the part of local control. And to the opportunity, I've always proposed and been a proponent of a port in Collinsville. It's the last deepwater port in the bay. Given sea level rise, Oakland and San Francisco are going to start to be inundated. You're going to have to build a new port somewhere. If shipbuilding gives us a foot in to building that port, that's where my support is. So, I'll leave it with that.
But that's not what we're voting on.
No, the legislation.
He's just sharing with the legislator that he supports-
Got it, right.
It as, as this, not with like whatever's going on at the Capitol right now with the sausage right this second.
And the goal in, in all of this that we have struggled and worked with is to try to maintain it to some foothold, you know, the WDI that was identified in 2008 and the area that we, we said should be at least started with. To help-
I'm thinking of Sequo back there with Jim saying something.
Supervisor Williams, ma'am.
Thank you. Well, this has been quite a bit to absorb, to think through. I had the opportunity to meet with some of my stakeholders yesterday, and so I had to kind of go back to what some of the things we've discussed, some of the things that I would like, like to see. Definitely, we talked about putting together guardrails in that location. This was something as a board we, you know, voted on. But we did talk about the pros and cons. Mitigation and, and community benefits. I just want to kind of go over that a little bit. Of course, we've all heard about jobs multiple times, and of course, it will create conservatively ten thousand jobs. And I want to just give thanks to all my stakeholders for providing me this information to share. It will definitely create those jobs, but it'll also create other jobs, small businesses, and it is a high-paying wage. Now, are they building autonomous ships as I was, my understanding? That's what it is that the proposal would be. So, the jobs in the beginning is mostly building trades, labor jobs in the beginning, and then as we transition, as it transitions, it becomes something a little bit different with a higher-paid wages for individuals that know how to work the technology. There's tax revenue, and there's economic impacts as well. So, there's, of course, plus and minuses. I'm going to be honest, today, nobody's going to be happy. It's one or the other. It's gonna, it's, it's just not a, to me, a win-win. It's a, either we make a decision or, or the governor's going to make the decision for us. So, I'm, that's my concern. There's opportunities for schools, but some of the issues and concerns that I had and wanted to make sure is protecting, there's some prime ag out there that has to be protected, putting buffers in place, thinking about noise pollution, health pollution. Those things are real. We can't acknowledge, not acknowledge those things. But I know there's pros and cons, and so that's why it's important to think about, well, what do those mitigation measures look like? And so, I wrote some things out, like flood mitigation, salt intrusion, minimizing the, there's, and I did some research, there's opportunities to do green shipbuilding, where they take into account promoting sustainability and creating a sustainable portfolio. I mean, these are some of the things I would like to see happen if this is the direction we go. Also, making sure there's thoughts about Mare Island. What does that look like for Mare Island in this process? Because in the end of the day, I just, for me, when I think about Solano County as a whole, I'm thinking about not just my area. I'm going to be honest, Sisoun City and Fairfield, they're going to benefit from these, this occurring. But that was not my, my full thought process, but I took all those things into consideration. But also, being one that cares about agriculture and the environment, I had to take those things into consideration. I had to look at, well, what the mitigation looks like for whole assembly, whole outfitting, how to minimize pollutants and air emissions, and significant infrastructure improvements have to be made in protecting our Delta. Because without that, we don't have, we're, excuse the term, we're screwed. Protection, so these are just some things that we have to be able to articulate and identify as issues to be mitigated and protected. Of course, we want good jobs. Of course, we want those things. I know I want good jobs here. I want to minimize that travel time back and forth, but I also want to protect our environment. So, we got to find a way, and this is when I, I'm looking out to those representing California Forever. There's, have to be better communication with, with us, with our community, but most importantly, putting together fact sheets on, what does that really look like? What doesn't it? The county being responsible as the lead, putting out information to make sure people understand what this means and what it doesn't, and making sure that we have every protection possible put in the legislation to make sure that if we need to say no to a project, that is really no. Because some of the verbiage in there said, "we may do," and to me, it's, I feel like we shall be able to cancel something versus we may. Because then that means, that means it, it could still happen and override us. And the goal is to be partners. In this partnership, if we say yes to this, then we need a one-hundred percent partnership. I never again want to be two weeks trying to figure it out and understand. I, we all need to be at the table, all of us, and we need to work collectively together. Let's be honest, everybody, California Forever owns, how much, sixty, how much acres?
Sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-six thousand acres. Okay.
Yes.
So, we got to work, we got to start working together. And I'm going to be honest, they didn't come in right. I could say that, because I know you already said you haven't. You haven't, they didn't. They didn't do that. And I need them to care one-hundred percent about the environment, prime ag, and protecting our people that live in those areas, making sure that you put everything possible to mitigate pollutants, because people's health is at risk, people's livelihood at risk. You heard a farmer say, well, it butts up against his eastern property, and he has vineyards. That's part of his livelihood. We need a buffer zone. So, I mean, I know those things maybe come later after this, but I just want you to know that I am thinking holistically at everything and making sure that everything is taken into consideration and that we can find a middle ground. Thank you.
Supervisor, if you don't mind me asking, because this is kind of what the need is, is are you telling our legislators that you're okay with going forward for them or no?
I would like to see some things changed to go forward, and that is on, let me see, I, I want it to not, for one, to say the 2008 EIR. We know that's not sufficient. It's not a study. We need to be able to study, but I'm trying to find where it said, let me find the legislation. There was a may, and I, I didn't really care for that because I felt like it took away our-
I think that's sixty-six four nine nine point nine oh one B. Is that the one you're referring to where they say may?
Yes, the county may require. I think that's just a shell. I would like to also, where it says Legislative Council Digest, this first page, the bill will require that any responsible agency other than, I, I need to make sure that it doesn't override Solano County's authority.
It does not.
The language, when it's speaking about responsible agency, that's the SEQUA terminology, you are the lead agency. Responsible agencies would be other permitting authority. One, one example, Bay Area Air Quality Management District. That would be a responsible agency. So, that's what this is talking about.
So, that would set a statewide precedent then that-
I think this bill sets statewide precedent.
I mean, overall, I know, but even more so, um, that part, I'm, I don't know about that part. Let me, let me look at that one. Can you come back to me? I need to think on that. Hold on a second.
Supervisor James, if she has any comments on this.
Yes, if we are sticking to the bill at hand, that the county has already agreed to the language and has been vetted through our staff, the lobbyists, and our council, then I think that we need to, it's either in our hands or it's in the governor's hands, and I'd rather have more local control. And I would also ask for an ad hoc too in regards to this as well, to make sure that we have all stakeholders at the table, where we have two supervisors and then bringing the community voice in, and that may be a bigger group. But I would say, because the county has already agreed to the language.
So, are you suggesting that this is for like implementation? You're talking about basically having an ad hoc to help guide the implementation?
Yeah, because every time, yeah, because the last time we had a conversation around California Forever and their land, because I'm separating the owner from the project. And the project is shipbuilding, because we often, Mare Island came up a couple of times, and Mare Island is majority owned by Mare Island Company. So, if we're talking about the project at hand, it's shipbuilding and the opportunity for smart economic development, local governance, and also within the bill and consulting with all the staff, there are, it's placing the land use and decision-making as, when we're talking about like environmental considerations at the local level. And if we do not, I'd say if we do not move forward with this, then we're leaving it to the decision of somebody else in regards to the environment, the environmental considerations. But all in all, just going back to the ad hoc, because the last time we had a conversation about this was in April, I'm saying like we should have an ad hoc so that way it could be a completely and fully transparent process because we heard that also numerous of times today.
Supervisor Vasquez, sir.
Yeah. So, if it's not a vote, what is it then? Is it consensus? Is it head shaking, head bobbing?
To us, we can relay to the, to the state.
But you're only going to take direction from a majority of the board? Are you not?
Direction could be by a vote. There's no, nothing-
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Staff is looking for direction on what do we do next?
Okay.
We've taken it as far as we can.
But if a majority of the board said we're in support of the legislation-
And that could be by a vote.
That could be by a vote or simply by, by making the statement.
I thought we were just giving direction, question, question.
Supervisor Brown.
It would be helpful if our two legislative folks would have let us know that they were doing this. So, when we talk about that we all want to work together and have a come-by-eye, whatever that word is, moment, it also means that you don't get this late because somebody two weeks ago decided not to be honest and told us what they were doing, because they didn't. Because some of us were at a meeting at Cal Poly Maritime Academy, and not one person who was there that represented and/or happened to be the legislator even brought that forward when we were having a conversation with Congressman John Garamendi. So, it goes both ways.
Okay. Supervisor Williams.
Okay. I, I, my hesitation is within ninety days for state agencies. I, that seems kind of quick to say that they have to get it, I mean, why not one hundred and twenty days, like four months?
Not our language.
Can we make recommendations back?
I don't think we got time. We've got ten minutes.
Well, you can, I mean, where's our senator on this? Have we gotten any updates on him lately? Or our Assembly member?
I think they're watching this hearing.
Oh, they're watching. Okay. I know. I'm like, I want an update.
I think their staff are watching. I should correct myself because the legislature's in session right now, but they're, they're waiting to get feedback from you.
Well, I, I don't want the governor to make the determinations for us. I think, I want to make sure to stay in local control. Okay, yeah, okay. We'll move forward, but I want to make it very clear. I'm not in favor that the verbiage is to override Measure T. I think that is gross overreach, to be honest, but I do understand that if we don't keep it in-house, then it'll be whatever, however someone else wants it to be without any, without us being there. So, I'll stand with the legislation, but I do want to see the, the shell, the may become a shell, if that's possible, if they can do that. I don't know if they can, but you identified where I had mentioned on B, the county, it says the county may require as part of amending zoning code, and I'm just making the recommendation.
On that one, I think when I read through that one, I think it's a weird word sequence anyway, because there's a may and then a shall. I think we could change it to say county shall require as part of the amending zoning code that individual marine projects require use permits. And that way, I think we, I think that's a minor one.
Okay.
And I would mention on the, on the responsible agencies for, the ninety days is for ministerial permits, a hundred and eighty days for discretionary permits, like a use permit, just, just to clarify.
All right.
Okay. My turn. So, a couple of things. The first is that, in hope that our legislative representatives are listening or their staff are listening, in getting to see this for this draft, I've seen a couple of other drafts that made my hair stand on end, but this is the first time I've seen this draft. I just have a couple of things that are of issue for me. And the first is on the first page under Legislative Council's Digest, where we were talking about all the ninety days for agencies or between the applicant and one or more responsible agencies, for them to do their review. The problem that I have with that is not any of that. It's at the very bottom where it says that any disputes are going to be submitted to the governor, and the governor gets to decide within forty-five days. No offense, but I trust the governor about as far as I could throw him. That's like three feet- three feet, and I probably don't even trust him that far. The, uh, the, the other piece of this is if you dig down a little further back, where it talks about the resolution to disputes in here. And I don't know what the page is. I'm looking for the little, I think it's under 25, or 21, 159.41, and then you go all the way down to 3A, and then B and C and so on and so forth, going down through there. And it says there that the disputes are going to be resolved in a specific fashion that I don't think is, is favorable to the county. And I think there's an issue with that. So even in the piece that we have, the legislation that we have right in front of us, there are two very significant issues for me. So before I weigh in on that, I want to go in the Wayback Machine to when this started about two weeks ago. And we started going through the mechanizations of the potential for legislation and the proposal of 7,500 acres and all of those things. And having that, having to be whittled down, and I want to go back again to the efforts of our staff and our legislators to do that, and, and the amount of time that went into that and effort that went into that to arrive at this document, which isn't still the final document. The need to do that was again generated, the need to do that in the, in the, in the time and fashion that we are, was generated because the company that is doing the siting, that cited the RFP, changed the rules. They moved the goalposts for the county and for the legislature and for all of those folks. That company, their primary investor and controller is, for all intents and purposes, Flannery, because he's one of their primary investors as well. That in and of itself caused a significant amount of angst for me. So, like Supervisor James, I have to take the people and the business out of the equation and look at the legislation and its intent, which is to help promote shipbuilding in the county. Do I think that we specifically need Saronic to be the company that does that? No. I think that if this site is as meritorious as everybody says it is, if it is the site, it is the best spot in all of the West Coast to do this kind of thing, that's not going to go away. And one project isn't going to make it not the best spot on the West Coast for that to occur. And if it is in fact that great a need for the federal government and for everybody else for the purposes of national security, there will be and can be other companies that are going to want to do this in a way that works with a bridge that's 10 feet too short, right? In a channel that's 30 feet in depth. The ask is for us to write basically a blank check, because again, this isn't the final draft. It's still being drafted and negotiated, and the sausage is still being made in Sacramento. And it can be anything, no matter what we really say up here, if the legislators move forward with it. So we're being asked to write a blank check and to put an incredible amount of trust, an incredible amount of trust in our two legislators. So far, I can say that, because he's the only one I've talked to, that Senator Cabaldin has truly made efforts and strides and has worked very hard. I saw the, the release that Assembly Member Wilson put out, and I'm appreciative of that. And, and all intents and purposes, it appears she's in the same lane. But again, that's an incredible amount of trust for 400,000 people to make. This, as it's written, as I'm looking at it, having a, a, a need to realign the coral, make it a rectangle, a triangle, a circle, whatever it is that might be needed by maritime in order for that to happen, I think is, is not, I think that's a doable thing. I think that we have to go into that with the realization and eyes wide open that that would entail probably the leveling of some of those hills in some areas, right? And, and the movement of some, some land out there in some fashion. But the offset to that is that some of those lands, go back to an agricultural designation, and as we heard from Supervisor Vasquez, that, that piece of coral wasn't exactly science-based. The fact that the legislation, as it's negotiated in this form, and when I, when I'm talking, I'm only talking about what I got in front of me, right? Is that the county has a say in that, and we get to do the environmental studies necessary to make sure that if there are mitigations required, we can at least try to address those. I think that this was formulated in a way by our legislators that it gives us a voice. And it would be hypocritical of me, after sitting up here for so many sessions of this board, complaining about the state cramming things down our throat without us having a voice, that the one time that the state had us at the table, albeit they gave us two weeks and they were cracking a whip and saying hurry, 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 it would be hypocritical of me to say, well, you know, that's all a wash and I don't care. I'm appreciative of that, and that, that has value, that we get to have a voice. I'm appreciative of the allowances that have been made in here for us to maintain local control, because again, I, I have said up here many times that it worries me that we could lose local control, and I, I worry that the state comes and takes local control away. But to Supervisor James's point, even if all of us up here said no, the state still, because its only trust, has the ability to do what they want to do. And they could impose anything they wanted to impose, and they could impose whatever sausage is being made right now that we don't know about. So if you ask me, can I support this particular piece of legislation that sits in front of me if I had to? Because it gives our county a voice still, because it gives the protections that are needed to some degree, and it gives us the ability to have a study? As much as I have to throw up my mouth a little bit and swallow that, and I'm sorry to use that analogy for everybody, I have to say that yes, I want us to be able to have a voice. Yes, I want us to be able to do the studies. Yes, I want it to be a public process. Yes, I want us to all have a say, except the governor. I don't want him to be the one who has the ability, or some commission that he sets up, to have the ability, his appointees, to make determinations about anything that's a dispute in this. If you are listening out there, legislators, that is the one piece that I have issue with. Right now, we are fighting as a county over our water with a board that the state has set up for people that are appointed by the governor, right? We're doing the same thing with the Delta Conveyance and the Tunnel. I do not have a lot of trust, and this is all about trust, I don't have a lot of trust in a gubernatorial level decision, right? I have to say, at this moment right now, I trust our legislators, because they have been in good faith trying to represent our county. So can I support what I have right in front of me right now? I almost have to for those two reasons. One, because I'm not trying to be a hypocrite after sitting up here saying I wanted to have a voice. And two, because the alternative is whatever gets pushed down our throat and apparently looking at the first tranche of legislation, that's 7,500 acres and a city. And I, and I, I do not want to be there. So there you have my statements on it. And I don't know if that, it's actually direction. I guess what I would, what would have to be direction would be number three here, where we say continue to engage with state partners, GO Biz, which is the governor's office, and legislators, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to offend GO Biz people, I really like the economic development people, it's just the administration I got problems with. And our legislators on legislation consistent with our county principles. And I, and as long as, James, you hold her feet to the fire, and Ms. Lang, you are there with him, right? You got his back? And counsel, very important, yeah. You're like the Darth Vader in the back, you know, you're going to use the force on him.
As long as you use my analogy of coral.
Right. I think that, yes, we should continue to engage. Yes, I think you need to make a call after this and be very clear with them what the problems are that the board has with this legislation, so that our legislators know what they need to put in or take out, or what needs to happen if this is, if this is even to go forward. If, if our legislators get up there and, and they're not making headway, and the governor's office is, or GO Biz or whoever it is is, is saying no, we're going to do this, and no, we're going to do that, then let them know. In that case, I'm a no. If our legislators aren't getting where they need to be, then this is a no for me. I got to have their back.
So in the end, we, we need a vote that provides direction.
All right. So then let's, would the board be comfortable with voting on number three here, to have staff continue to engage with state partners on legislation consistent with county principles?
I would want all of them.
Yeah.
All of them?
Yeah.
All right, then, then, then...
Including supporting legislation.
Yeah, the only, the only difference I would make in that recommendation is to put or opposed, strike that out.
It would support the legislation before you. And again, just for clarity, I know that there is, there was two different versions, what, what staff had, had discussed yesterday with the governor's office and with, with the project lobbyists, and then there's this version. This version is what we understand is, is Senator Cabaldin's language. And so going back to your point, so what I, what I heard was you're supporting what Senator Cabaldin is trying to do. I'll be honest, I never thought that we could ask for the $250,000. I like that. I think that's a great recommendation. So I think that that's a great add in this bill that wasn't in the version that we hadn't discussed.
I guess what I'm kind of reading is if you take the totality of that, you're giving us a little flexibility to deal with the final wrangling, as long as it meets the basic principles.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be, all right, I'll make that a motion.
We can make motions?
You just did. We made a motion in a second on this recommendation.
To provide, you're providing direction.
To provide direction. This is the direction we're giving, and we're voting to give that direction.
I thought we just did not when we don't have it as an action item.
It is, it is an action item, it's just not using the words we're accustomed to.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor for what you see in front of you right now. Supervisor James.
Oh, James did, did.
I thought it was, he motioned.
It's irrelevant to me.
His motion, no, he motioned it.
With the understanding that or opposed is going to be gone, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Direction given by a 5-0 vote.
Appreciate the direction. Like I told you at the beginning, this is not, this is not the, not the circumstances we would want to bring something to you. It's a very unique situation.
Clear as mud, Bill.
Aaron, thank you for sitting there. It was all I could do not to give you a coloring book or something.
Are the FOC people here?
We're here.
Are you saying one is the same?
We need to have it, we do, we need to have them regularly.
We'll try and be quick on this one.
We'll try and be quick on this one.
Application was put back on the agenda for June 5th of 2025. And again, numerous opposition comments were received, including from like after hours, the night before, from the fire district with a new reviewer stating that they believed that some code requirements applied that hadn't yet been met. So the zoning administrator made the decision to continue the hearing to give staff a chance to review the comments. So after the hearing, the Vacaville Fire District conducted an inspection of the property and determined that it actually was okay, as they had previously said before the November hearing, and retracted the other comment letter. And the project was heard again on June 19th, and this, after testimony from the public and the applicant, the zoning administrator took action to approve the permit. After the appeal, after the approval, an appeal was submitted and cited concerns of increased traffic, increased noise, increased fire danger, lack of accessibility and evacuation plans, and general opposition to the special events facility. And general responses to the concerns, as far as increased traffic, the events would be a maximum of 12 times per year and include up to 60 vehicles entering and exiting the property, and that would include event attendees, staff, all of that. Which, the 60 vehicles is the expected amount for 150 people. And the events are expected to be outside of the peak traffic hours, and the conditions of approval require that the Vicry Lane be maintained and repaired if necessary prior to each event. As far as increased noise, it would be subject to the same noise standard for all uses in the county of 65 decibels at the property line. And also per conditions, if there are repeated complaints, the project could be set for a revocation hearing by the planning commission. And the concern of increased fire danger, conditions of approval require an event management plan be submitted and approved by the resource management and the fire district prior to operation, and that the property be maintained free of junk and debris, which at the site, the times that I visited the site, it certainly was. It is located in a very high fire hazard severity zone as designated by CAL FIRE, but both the building official and Vacaville Fire District staff have inspected the property and determined that the access, availability of water, and other conditions are acceptable for the proposed use. And no new development is proposed that would require the SRA standards be met at this point, although when the public restroom is constructed, those standards would be reviewed, and plans would have to meet those requirements, be reviewed by the building and fire district. As far as lack of accessibility and evacuation plans, per conditions of approval, ADA accessibility is required for the parking and access to the areas where the events would take place, and no other new development is proposed that would be subject to the required ADA improvements. And then the event management plan will include providing access for all guests, including those who need disabilities. And the last appeal concern was the general opposition to the project, and the use would be subject to all the performance standards that apply to all land uses, and then also the agricultural district allows more intensive and somewhat commercial-type uses than a residential district. So to some extent, business activities that will create additional traffic are to be expected. So the appeal was first heard by the planning commission, and that was August 7th, 2025. And the the commission heard testimony from both the applicant and neighbors and for and against the project, and the motion to both approve and deny the appeal were tied, so now we are here. And the staff recommendation is to conduct the public hearing on the project and to deny the appeal request and approve a resolution upholding the zoning administrator's decision and approving the project. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, with that, I see no questions from the board yet. Are there any questions from the board before we take public comment? Go ahead, sir.
So they're allowed to do 12 events, up to 12, but by right, they can do six without a permit, could they not?
So in this case, because it is on, because it's on a private road, the
Oh, okay.
Access via a private road, it requires a minor use permit for either six or 12 events. If it was accessed via a public road, it would require an administrative permit, which isn't allowed by right, but it wouldn't require a hearing. They would just have to show that they meet all the code requirements and zoning standards, and it would be approved by
Thank you for that clarification.
So we have our fire folks here, so here's a quick question. There's going to be 60 cars. I always panic when we talk about fires and 60 cars, and kind of like a, maybe not the easiest of roads to go on. So for, in your estimation and your colleagues, when you were looking it over, are we going to be okay? Should there be only one way out, so to speak, for 60 cars to get out quickly so that everybody's going to be safe? As much as possible, nothing's perfect in the world.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I appreciate the question. So we did do a site visit on it, myself and Chief O'Connor, and when we took a look at the access, egress, ingress of the property, Victory Lane, obviously straight down in the cul-de-sac, not an issue meets fire code. When you get into the driveway, there's the parking lots that would suffice for the 60 vehicles. They do have alternate access to be able to get vehicles out in emergency.
Okay. And everybody knows not to double park, because we all go to some of these, and there's more than, maybe think you're only going to have 60 cars, but you might end up with 75, and then somebody decides to double park, and then you can't get a fire truck through. So
No, absolutely, and with some of the recommendations with the plan on the site manager there, that they can be able to coordinate that kind of stuff for us.
Yeah. And it's a big concern, and part of it is that we still haven't taken, haven't gotten our FEMA money, so Cordelia Road, still, you know, in Cordelia, you only got one way out, and you got 4,000 kids, and that's my big worry. So I worry, even if we have just 100 people, are they going to be safe to get out? Because I don't want anybody to have a permanently bad day. How does that sound?
No, I agree with you.
All right, great.
No issues with the fire, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Williams.
I just wanted to know, are we still, and I don't know if this qualifies, but encouraging our good neighbor policy, are they, you know, I know it's strongly encouraged, but not required, or is that still being recommended?
Yeah, it's being recommended to every project applicant. In the case of this one, they submitted the application before that went into effect, so we didn't send them a written, strong recommendation, but we did explain to them that it had gone into effect since their application had been submitted, and they did make an effort to do outreach to the neighbors. But this project predated the approved policy, so it didn't get the same notification, a new project would.
All right. I was just wondering on that front. And so once they, because my question was, you know, the evacuation plan, what that looked like, so that will go back to the fire chief? Or does it come back to the planning department? Who oversees or look at these particular plans?
Once the plan was submitted, James would see it, Alan would see it, the fire chief, the building official, I would look at it and then do an inspection if warranted, and then at that point, once everyone was happy with it, then it would be signed off for them to start conducting events.
Well, that's good to hear, multiple ayes. Would like to see that going forward, what we just voted on, too. But yeah, all right. That's all my questions, thank you.
All right. That's all I see for questions for now, so I'll open the public hearing, and we'll take public comment. And first up is Teri Ferguson.
I probably don't need this, but. Good afternoon, I'm Teri Ferguson, and I oppose this MUP 2308. I've lived on Putea Creek Road for at le, for the last 38 years, and we've experienced many fires during these years, including the two fires in 2020 that killed three people. The location for this permit is accessible on a private road that dead-ends at the Petrillo property. There is only one way in and one way out. There is no other access. There is no other access. During a fire with 150 to 200 people in attendance, this would be a very dangerous situation for the attendees and the other residences on Vicry Lane. The Petrillos themselves have publicly shared with their terrifying experiences on the news, on social media videos, and in multiple newspapers. They understand the dangers of fire in this area and evacuating their own property during a fire. The property owners within the one-half mile radius of this property have written to the county voicing their personal concerns in opposition of this permit. This property is a residence, it's not an events facility. We do not want to put up with the noise, the traffic, the parking issues, and the possibility of an additional fire. There will be drunk and impaired drivers leaving a wedding. We all know people drink, we all know they drink too much. We don't want that. And just imagine this disruption for up to 24 weeks a year. They say 12 events, we all know there's planning before, there's planning aft, or cleanup afterwards, people need to come in. We're talking a long time and an impact to the neighbors. Remember, this is an SRA, very high fire hazard severity zone. The state fire marshal has determined this, not Solano County, not me, it's the state of California, the fire marshal. Why would the county approve this hazardous area to become a special events venue? Why would you put people at risk when we know there's a potential for fire? I hope you will represent the property owners in this opposition and deny this permit. I also ask you to rewrite the agritourism zoning code to exclude all SRA, high-fire-risk properties in Solano County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Shelby Ferguson.
Hi, thank you. My name is Shelby Ferguson, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. I was born and raised on Putea Creek Road, you just heard from my mom, Teri Ferguson, my dad Greg Ferguson is here as well. One day, I will inherit my parents' property. I care deeply about preserving the area's rural character, and that's why I'm here with my parents and several other property owners to urge the board in voting no on the multi-use permit application. In the limited allotted time that I have, I'll make two brief points. One of them is regarding public safety, and the other is equality. First, in regards to public safety concerns. During the Quail Fire and the LNU complex fire of 2020, my parents and I stayed behind to defend our property, we had no choice. Thankfully, we were successful both times, we saved our property. I wouldn't wish that experience on anyone, unless you've experienced it firsthand, fighting back flames as they're about to destroy you and your home, or trying to at least, you just can't understand it, it's something you have to live through firsthand. This story matters because a proposed permit allows large gatherings, up to 150 people, in a very high fire hazard severity zone as classified by CAL FIRE. Many of the visitors who will be attending these events will be unfamiliar with the area, terrain, evacuation routes, and then just the general fire risks. Whether it's a spark that comes from an event on the property in question, or a fast-moving fire from elsewhere, the danger is very real. In a crisis, confusion and panic are detrimental. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. Another major fire will impact this area. And when it does, and God forbid, something happens at this property, I fear that the county is going to be asked, why did you allow such a venue to exist when you knew the risks? My second and final point is in regards to the equality that all property owners deserve. The draft MUP claims, this is a paraphrase, that there will be no effect on neighboring properties or residents. With all due respect, how can someone who has drafted this and doesn't live in the area come to such a conclusion? In the last several weeks, over 15 property owners have submitted letters, emails, and spoken in person to express their concern. Many are here again today to say, the opposite is true, our life will be affected. The concerns that are being raised are not abstract, they're very real, and our voices matter. As board members, it's my understanding that's your duty to represent everyone, not just one applicant. We're not asking for any special treatment, we're simply asking for fairness. We're asking you to listen to those who live here and will bear the consequences of this decision. My final point is this, one family's business venture should not come at the expense of their neighbor's quality of life. Please represent the will of the majority and vote no on this MUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Ballow.
Chairman Marsh, Marshburn, and Board. I'm testifying to add my name to the record of 25 close neighbors who have all opposed granting this permit, MU 2308, to establish a commercial wedding and events venue on the rural property. I'm also in support of Matthew Flannery's appeal of the zoning commission's approval. Two years ago, my husband and I purchased property in the area and are currently building a house there that overlooks Vicry Lane and the venue. It's been a lifelong dream of ours to have a quiet and peaceful country place. I understand that this little northeast corner of Solano County seems very removed from all the challenges and serious issues you face every day and work so hard to resolve. However, granting this permit will seriously affect those of us who live close by and changes the entire character of this agricultural area. Here's why you should not approve this permit. Over 20 people, now 25 people, all neighbors who live close by have unanimously opposed the proposed wedding and events center. Not one of us is in favor of it. The applicants have eight messages in support of their venue. They're all character endorsements and references, they, none of them mention the venue, and none of them live in the immediate area. Noise is an issue. It's amazing how far sound can carry. Our quiet little country, when it is quiet, when there are no motorcycles on Pleasant Valley Road, has a decibel level of 20. Compare that to a suburban area in the evening when it's peaceful, that's a decibel level of 40. And yet, you're saying that a decibel area, a decibel level of 65 is permissible. I think with a wedding reception, 140 people laughing, partying, live music, alcohol, every weekend in May, or possibly every weekend September, will destroy the quality of life for those of us in the area. Traffic's an issue, and the issue is not an additional two or three cars per day over a year. The issue is 60 to 100 cars, all trying to get to the same place at the same time. Dust and noise from the potholes gravel and neglected asphalt that they call Vicry Lane means cars should drive no faster than five miles an hour, but we know that won't be happening.
Chair time.
That's your time, ma'am.
Oh. Okay, I thank you. I hope that you will consider the residents of the area.
Thank you. Debbie Sureness.
Okay, I probably sound like a broken record, this is everything I said at the last hearing, but all you have to do is live through four fires, which I have in a row, and I don't care what the firemen say, I don't care how impeccable their property is. I too have an impeccable property. I have fire hoses everywhere, I have pumps to go in the pool, I have everything, golf carts, you name it. We still fought for our life and our house, and it's, we saved it. So I don't, it doesn't matter whether they have one venue, they have five venues, they have 12 venues, all it takes is one party, out in the dry brush with too many people. And I don't care what they think, they cannot control all the people. These are not relatives, these are people that have hired their venue. So they're going to do what they want to do, which they have the right to do. They're not going to be able to patrol it. We live to the country because we want peace and quiet, okay? It's bad enough with the spinouts on the corners that we can't get anything done about, but this is ridiculous, we can get something done about this, this is not necessary. They can, they can go buy a venue, go do it somewhere else out in the country like Park Winners. Don't do it where there's houses all around that are relying on safety and peace and quiet. And finally, I hope they're prepared, and all of you are prepared, for when the insurance companies find out that they're out there, then our premiums are going to go sky-high, or it's going to be that last little straw that broke the camel's back, and they're going to just stop our coverage, you know? So it's, and that could happen, because we'd been warned, and we are in a high-fire danger area. So this, it's just, it's ludicrous that it's even come this far. I, that's all I have to say.
All right, next is Matt Flaherty. Oh, that's the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Hey, I'm Matt Flaherty. I grew up on Vicry Lane, and as the neighbors sharing a property line with the Petrillos, we feel the need to speak up against this MUP specifically about the following points. Well, first off, the road maintenance agreement at Vicry Lane worked perfectly fine until it didn't work for them, in which case the county came and usurped everybody else's vote. Nobody on Vicry Lane wanted this to take place, so they went around, and here we are. And I feel that it was an absolute injustice that occurred. It was unfair, and it was a violation of our rights, the people on Vicry Lane, all of our rights, we had a say in what happened on Vicry Lane, then all of a sudden, we didn't. Absolute injustice. It's not eminent domain, it's not a project for the greater good. It's actually the opposite. It'll negatively impact 100% of the people in the area. Yes to Solano County agritourism, no to this location, because of all the neighbors opposing, all the neighbors opposing. The two planning commission individuals who visited the site from the last hearing knew well that it was a bad location, and they voted absolutely not. The two individuals that didn't visit the location voted let's give it a try, because they didn't understand. How is it possible that the zoning administrator and half of the planning commission is ignoring all of the residents that live in the area? We understand things can't always come down to a majority rules, but this is such a lopsided situation, and the neighborhood is unanimous in its opposition to this MUP. It's a clear decision. Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Can somebody explain to me what happened to the road agreement? There was none.
There was no road agreement.
That's what I thought, there was no road agreement to begin with. There may have been an agreement with the neighbors on the We had, I'm not, I
Chris Rucci, County Surveyor. There is no road maintenance agreement of record that is against any of the properties that was associated with that subdivision. The road maintenance agreement was changed through the ZONETech's requirement to where it was only affected on new subdivisions, not existing uses.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification on ordinance. Greg Ferguson.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I have three points I would like to offer for your considerations. First, we have submitted a robust amount of code and law requirements that are missing in the MUP application, and why MUP should be rejected based on these codes and law. These codes and law are directly out of current California building and fire code publications. They are not made up, they are real, and they all apply to operation of a commercial event facility as proposed in MUP 2308. Second, the proposed approval of MUP constitutes serious and willful act by both applicant and Solano County. We have diligently pointed out codes and law, and site is located within very high-fire zone that has already experienced two significant wildfires resulting in property loss of human and animal life. By proceeding despite these warnings and knowing history of site, the county and applicant would not merely be negligent, but would be engaging in a serious and willful disregard for public safety and established law. Third, in addition, we see strong similarities to the catastrophe unfolding at the Espardo fireworks explosion case. Administration of MUP by Solano County, weak application requirements, building department not coordinating with fire department, and no one talking to CAL FIRE, who has raised their hand in concern of this project's approval. Additionally, multiple examples and similarities are reported where fires have started from other special events, weddings, gender reveal parties, and drinkation parties, all of which are planned at Petrillo's event facility. The most recent example, Picket Fire in Calistoga, started because of reckless placement of ashes while getting ready for a wedding event. Oh. In conclusion, Petrillo's property is not a safe or responsible location for special events facilities, and have a history and propensity of starting fires. MUP is weak on code and law, including evacuation means and methods. Given the facts and reasons stated here, as well as all submitted information, we respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to reject MUP 2308. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Next is David Wataju. Did I get that right? I hope, sort of.
My name's David Waichin, but
Oh, all right.
Thank you. My wife and I recently purchased the property that is directly adjacent to Vicry Lane, so all the cars that are going to be coming and going will go past our place. The property was a bare piece of land because the house burned down, and the previous owners did not rebuild it. We are concerned about the fire risks, and we are concerned about the noise, and additionally, all the lights, headlights that will be shining on our property every single time the cars are going to be coming and going. So we oppose this MUP. Thank you.
Thank you. David Sotelo.
Thank you for this opportunity. I've been a minister for 45 years, ordained with the evangelical Free Church. I pastored at Valley Church during 1990 through 2000, and made great friends with the Petrillos, know them, be responsible. Petrillo's tire has been a business run efficiently, and I've been the officiant for up to six events at the Petrillo place, and the considerations that they take, it's impeccable events, every consideration is given, not unlike what you are doing in terms of the jurisdiction to grant this request, or that's already been approved, that you have people with the county who have done due diligence and have reported without bias as to the approval of this proposal. So I, I've had to sit governing in churches to know that you've So, I, I've had to sit governing in churches to know that you've, it seems you've done as well as could be expected, in giving people who have an alter, alternative view their, their time. And I, I think, as I've experienced it firsthand, that this is a wonderful venue, and all the considerations that have been expressed have been addressed by the county, as well as the Petrillo's, who show, have shown themselves through decades of holding events and of integrity and the highest kind of care to make, ensure their guests or whatever, their clients are totally satisfied.
All right. Charles Pierce.
Good afternoon. I've lived in Winters for the last 25 years. I've got over 20 years' experience in firefighting with the military and the oil refining business. After I was hurt in Iraq, I couldn't go back to work. So, I ended up buying the Pizza Factory in Winters, where I restored it, remodeled it, brought it back to life, ran it for five years, and then decided it's time to retire. Food service business was nuts, not for the getting, people who are getting old. So, I started a business, as John knows, because of my firefighting background. I wanted to help people. And I also live in the LNU complex fire area. And I was the one victim who lost a structure in the Win Two Fire three years ago. But I started a business to help people that live in the country with mowing and disking in the beginning of fire season, to help them prepare for fire season. The first year, a lot of people took advantage of that. Then they realized, oh, I don't need to spend the money. I did okay last year. And then when fires get close to them, then they give me a call, and I tell them it's too dry. There's nothing I can do. The Petrillo's property, to hear a lot of these complaints about why they shouldn't do it, when we have the most traffic going to Lake Berry Esso on 128, which is one of the ingress and egress routes, a highway. And you also have Pewter Creek Road. And a lot of customers mine are on Pewter Creek Road and Canal Lane. I service a lot of those properties. It sounds to me like it's a lot of NIMBYism. They don't want it in their backyard, and they don't even have any clue of what they're actually going to be looking at. It's not going to impact their lives. So, I hope you look at it in the way that it's a family who wants to stay in California as prices and taxes seem to increase. When you're on a fixed income, as you reach an, an older age and are retired, you know, consider this. I mean, I know I'd like to be able to do something with my property if, if the possibility ever came up. It would make it easier for me, because I know when you're paying $10,000, $20,000, $30,000 a year in property taxes, you need all the help you can get. So, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have any callers online? No? All right. Next is Ms. Petrillo. And remember, we've got three minutes.
I'm the applicant.
Applicant five.
She's the applicant.
Okay, applicant five, yeah. 10? 10? Oh, you got 10. The lawyer has spoken.
Okay, well, you guys, I practiced, and I practiced thinking it was like the commissioners meeting with 15 minutes. So, I'll try to keep it down, but it is an important situation with these guys. And I need them to hear this, and I need you to hear it. So, I hope you'll be a little bit lenient. We appreciate the opportunity to present plans for our ranch where we have lived for 36 years. For too long, we have not been able to share our hopes and vision, and for our truth to be known and heard. This hearing gives us the opportunity. So, we welcome this, and thank you. Hopefully, I can convey all that I have been rehearsing in my mind. Countless hours have been spent in consideration. Supervisors, please bear with me, as I try to respect everyone's time. We would like to welcome and acknowledge our neighbors to the hearing and express our hopes to foster stronger relationships within the community from this process, regardless of the outcome. Having shared many years together, decades in some cases, we aim to build even better interactions moving forward. We understand that this situation is stressful for all involved, and we regret any difficulties that it may have caused you. Our goal is not to create harm, but to contribute to the positivity and well-being of everyone. We also wish to thank those who've taken time out of their busy schedules to attend here today in support of Mike and I and our permit. Supervisor Vasquez observed during his visit a couple of years back that there is something significant about this property and our passion and dedication to our farm. There's something special about this place. When people visit, I kid you not, I kid you not, every single person steps out of their vehicle speechless and in wonder, as their eyes drink in the landscape, almost as though it is giving them something they need. I witnessed this yesterday as two fire chiefs came. And I witnessed it when Planning Manager Alan Calder and his staff and fire chiefs visited. The Petrillo Ranch has multiple orchards strategically located within a park-like setting, complementing the landscape with interwoven fruit and nut trees and garden areas. Our business model includes a farm stand where people can enjoy you pick by appointment, or opt for freshly fruit, freshly picked fruit, or pickup, or delivery. We seek approval to host private events to support these operations. The Petrillo Ranch is located in the northwest region, as we already discovered, and we share a property line with Park Solano, Ranch, I'm sorry, Solano Park, Lake Solano Park. All property is located on Vicry Lane Farm, with the exception of the carry-ons. There are many farms in our locale with orchards on Pewter Creek Road and on the other side of Lake Solano stretching towards Winters along Highway 128. The region is rich in farming and has been farmed for over 150 years. Based on research, it is evident that there are numerous agriculture enterprises operating in Solano County under similar circumstances to those outlined in our use permit application. The U.S. Department of Agriculture defines agritourism as a form of commercial enterprise that leaks agricultural production with tourism to attract visitors to a farm, ranch, or other agricultural business for purposes of entertaining or educating the visitors while generating income for the farm. We grow a diverse selection of high-quality, naturally grown, pesticide- and paraben-free fruits, citrus, nuts, berries, vegetables, herbs, and flowers in a manicured setting that is pleasant to experience. Currently, the farm maintains approximately 650 to 700 fruit, citrus, and nut trees, as well as 100 boysenberry plants, along with an additional reserve of 75 to 100 trees designated for backup stock or future expansion. So, there is a significant investment. We also have farm animals, goats, sheep, horses, cows, chickens, turkeys. The remaining of the portion of the ranch consists of our home and manicured gardens and preserved natural spaces. We currently employ our farming, for our farming operation, one full-time worker who has been with us for 11 years. There is a need for additional farm workers. Solano County has expressed a commitment to supporting agriculture, agritourism, food production within its jurisdiction. Recognizing the need for farmers to supplement their income, the county permits farm stands and group gatherings as additional revenue resources. This opportunity enables us to enjoy essential staff, sustain farming activities, and continue producing food crops. Supplemental income is critical to our business model. Our operations align with the state of California and Solano County's vision for local agriculture and agritourism. We bring both expertise and dedication as demonstrated over 36 years at this location. The ranch exemplifies a high ethical standard and a commitment to best practices. We follow rigorous protocols and approach land stewardship with diligence and responsibility. Our farm stand will benefit the county by generating income for ourselves, those we employ, and other local farmers and businesses that we conduct business with. There is a revenue chain effect that will take place. Events at our ranch will further boost revenue in the food, service, rental, retail, and hospitality industries. We would expect residual revenue from the events. It has been our experience that our Airbnb downtown winters, the Queen on Main, attracts guests interested in local activities, and we direct them to nearby farms and businesses. With two lakes, farms, fine dining, wineries, and breweries, and the charm of Winters, the area has become a destination getaway with potential for outlying businesses to benefit. We are exactly what Solano County is envisioning, and we, the Petrillo's, have a solid track record in the county of being successful in business as Petrillo's Tire and Auto Incorporated, contributing to Solano County revenue over $60 million over 30 years. We're one of the most qualified for this type of use that the county has ever come across. In fact, overqualified in so many facets of this. No one is better suited to do this and to be the model for Solano County for how to do this the right way. I want to give you our brief background, because it became apparent to me in the opposition letter that no one knows Mike and Rhonda Petrillo. Things were spoken, or things were written, that are simply untrue, and it's just out of ignorance. So, with that, Mike. Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company, 18, 1981 to 1989, positions held. Managed retail automotive repair stores in Walnut Creek, Santa Clara, and Cupertino with over 20 employees and generating millions of dollars in annual sales, setting sale records in every situation he was put in. Served as regional wholesale sales manager overseeing distribution to independent dealers and franchises from Marin County to the Oregon border. District manager for all corporate retail stores in Northern California, supervising more than 150 employees at 17 locations. Wholesale dealer business and marketing counselor for Northern California. Throughout his tenure, Mike played a key role in organizing major events involving dealers, partner groups, and corporate Goodyear personnel. 1989 to 2020, Petrillo's Tire and Auto Services. Owned from startups and branded multiple successful Petrillo's Tire and Automotive Repair Centers, Fairfield, Vallejo, and Vacaville. Led and coordinated numerous promotional activities, fundraisers, car shows, and holiday events at Fairfield and Vacaville facilities over three decades. Owned and orchestrated the 2005 American Muscle Machine Car Show Event in Vacaville, the largest car show event in Solano County at the minor league ballpark near the airport that is now Lowe's. Attracting thousands of attendees over two days. The event featured our military and supported Mission Solano. It was executed flawlessly. Me. In 2000 to 2015, I was the Marketing and Operations Manager for Total Horsemanship Trainer. I branded and directed and created marketing, advertising, business relations, and office management functions. I authored a recurring column for an equestrian magazine, and created instructional materials for horse-related curricula. I organized annual public demonstrations at the Western States Horse Expo, the premier event of its kind in the western United States, including booth design and comprehensive horse care coordination for 10 years. Supervised contracts and operation, operational logistics for film productions utilizing company horses. I want to add here that the film industry requires the utmost of professionalism. On a movie set, there are hundreds of moving components. Organization and skill is not an option. My role was to construct a safe environment for film crews, directors, actors, and horses themselves. And I could go on about our qualifications for events. Both Mike and I, we've done this. We know what we're doing. So, thank you. I wish I could say more. I had more planned. But what, what I wanted to end with was, for my neighbors, this, this has been really, really heart-wrenching and difficult. I don't know you guys, and I wish I did. I mean, we just, our country properties are so spread that we just don't interact. So, I'm sorry to... Yeah, well, it's, it's quiet unless there's something else that, like a car or something, but...
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am. All right. So, with that, I will close the public hearing. And there's nobody online, right?
Nobody online.
Okay. So, I'll close the public hearing and take it back in the hands of the board. And Supervisor Williams has a question.
First and foremost, I want to thank everyone that came out today to share their thoughts and on this matter. I'm just going to get down to the nitty-gritty here. Okay, so, is there going to be time restraints for the hours of operation? What's, do we know what those are?
Yeah, yeah, Supervisor. Ellen here. Hours of operation are limited to 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on the day of the scheduled event, with setup and cleanup between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. And that's typical of all special events facilities that we condition.
Just going to go down my questions. What are the distances between the homes? Mile, two mile, three. Well, how far away are they from one another?
So... If you go back to the vicinity map, it would be the second slide. You can see all of the comments, or I shouldn't say, the majority of the comments are within a half-mile radius. So... The quarter to half-mile between houses in general. I would have to look at the map to measure exactly, but in, in general, the zoning is 820, so the properties are about 20 acres. And so, yeah, quarter to half-mile between, from most of the houses to the Petrillo's house and events area.
Is there going to be a traffic study conducted? And I ask that based on, okay, so, I'm asking that to ask the next question. This is, will there be a traffic study? And if not, who's going to be responsible for the road repairs? For the constant, I mean, is it a county road or a private road?
It's a private road. The, the applicant has taken responsibility for, for maintenance and upgrades of the road as part of the, one of the conditions of the use permit. From a traffic study standpoint, let's see if Matt wants to comment. Need bigger boat. So, we have a threshold of more than 100 vehicles, about 110 vehicles, to actually trigger a traffic review. Sorry, Matt Tugel, I'm engineering manager for Solano County. And in particular, the, the low number of parcels that actually access Vicry Lane would not also trigger a study. It's such a low volume of vehicles.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. I heard someone mention something about insurance impacts. Aren't, in my understanding, like when there's a event, they have to have the insurance, right?
Yeah, there's a condition to require that the applicant have commercial property insurance to cover the events.
I did hear there's no road agreement. And then, is it possible to understand? Because the, the main concern I heard, well, one, two, two, was that it seemed like the neighbors don't want to hear any noise. But, but in, in reference to the fire zone, they kept mentioning that they live in a very high fire zone area. Is there any, like, do we provide any special direction from the fire department on best ways to get people out of this area? Because it seemed like, I have never been over there, so I don't know. That's why I'm asking all these questions. Is this a, like a one-way in? I think someone said a one-way in, one-way out.
Yeah, so Chief Ebersini here. So, Victory Lane is one-way in and out on the main lane down into the cul-de-sac. So Victory Lane is one-way in and out on the main lane down into the cul-de-sac. Off the top of my head, you can at least pass two to three vehicles in a road down the lane. Once you get to the end of the private driveway off the lane, that's where access diminishes down to their parking lots. But the intent of the fire code that we meet in the prevention side, in regards to the severity zones of higher fire danger, we base and look at we debatement, we look at trying to make sure, you know, the fuel reductions in the area, everything for egress and ingress for occupants or the public.
Okay.
And Supervisor, if I might also to add to the chief's comments, there are no new structures being proposed on-site?
Oh, okay.
None at all, so that does not trigger an SRA review? So they are only proposing to do a tent, which would be permitted through the fire department?
All right. I want to thank you for answering my questions, and I ask that, you know, this is why I really, and I know this, I understand that this application was put in before, this application been in process for a minute now. Now, I mean, when you said before, I was like, wait, they've been trying to do this for a minute. It's imperative, it's so imperative. This is an example of why it's important to do your good neighbor policy and have your meetings with your community and have those conversations upfront. Doesn't guarantee that everybody's going to be in agreement, but at least they can understand, and there's not the fear factor or the misunderstanding of things. And then, I know people feel, you hear about it, like, what's happening in my neighborhood? It causes stress, and so I just want to put that on the record. We really need to continue to encourage that.
And Supervisor, if I might, although as Travis mentioned, this did precede the good neighbor policy that we've adopted. I know that the Petrillos have been diligent with reaching out to their neighbors. They've taken steps to reach out on numerous occasions. As you know, this has been in process for some time, so I've had conversations with the Petrillos. They've discussed the fact that they've reached out numerous times to their neighbors in this, for this project.
Okay. Well, I do appreciate that, to know that they took the time to make sure they reached out. I don't have any more questions, Chair. Those answers helped me. Thank you.
Supervisor Brown.
Well, first off, I like the trapezoid, so that was a whoever, whoever created that. That was a nice, nice, nice touch. So, it sounds like the applicant has, has taken, and people can come and get fresh fruit and so, so it sounds like that has always been something happening. It's, it sounds like it's the wedding venue that is something that's being added. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. They have a farm stand, it's by right, they could do that. That's not part of this process.
Right, no, I don't. But I just want to make sure, in other words, so they've had, they've had cars that have come because they, obviously, to get the food, right? If you're going to be buying the fruit and vegetables, I'm assuming, making that assumption, because I'm not, I'm looking right here to see if it was someplace that you would drive and you would be right there and get your food or something like that. I'm just trying to, just trying to figure this out, because I'm just kind of curious, because we have twenty-five people, I guess, who are not happy with this, and so is there a way to split the baby and say, let's try it for a year and see what happens? Or is that not something that we would ever do? Beg your pardon?
So the conditional use permit, if they violate it, or people aren't complying?
Oh, okay. Well, then that's, I just, okay, all right. So conditional use, okay, all right, sounds good. Thanks, guys, that's what I needed to know.
All right. Are there any more questions from the board? I don't see any more. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to make, not a question, make a statement. Just in reference to the time, that till ten o'clock at night and then until eleven, I mean, that, on a Saturday, to me, it's a little late. I'm hopeful that the applicant would consider to, I'm sorry, I can't do back and forth, it's just the rules, to be mindful, considering maybe, maybe having to stop at nine o'clock and be done by ten versus going until eleven o'clock. That was just, I mean, my recommendation, just to have peace with your neighbors, but other than that, that was all I wanted to add.
Yeah, I don't know if we have ways to restrict this. The statute, it's consistent on use permits throughout the county.
The hours of operation is per the zoning standards for the special events land use. I mean, conditions can be imposed on a particular permit, but that is the board-approved time for any special events facility, but it can be conditioned to whatever it needs to be for a particular application.
And since these are zoned ag parcels, if any of the owners wanted to farm at two in the morning, they could do it, they could run combines. So, I mean, as an ag consideration, these are agricultural parcels, not residential parcels. There's a distinction that's made by the code. That's why we have to come through this process.
Point, thank you.
Through the chair. I might just add a couple of additional items that weren't mentioned. There is an event management plan requirement that is a condition of approval, so this would be provided to James for his review prior to operations, and this would have to do with event management, emergency evacuations. They've agreed to hire a professional consultant to assist them with that, so that would be provided to us for review prior to operation. They've taken kind of extraordinary measures in some ways with regards to fire. They have two water tenders on their property for fire suppression. I've seen them personally, and then also, you know, this is the type of project that's in keeping with agritourism, additional revenue streams, board priorities that we've talked about in the past. This is exactly the kind of project that we are advocating for, really, and thus our support for the project as conditioned. So I just want to reiterate that point as well.
Thank you, Ellen. With that, I don't see any more questions from the board. Is there a motion?
I'm going to go back to staff recommendations, please.
Sure.
Second. You're making a recommendation for the staff?
He's going to pull them up and then, yeah, he wants to make sure it's all where he wants to be.
Well, I'll make a motion to support staff's recommendations, one and two.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote.
It's ordered by a vote of five-zero.
So with that, item twenty-four now becomes, oh, item twenty-four now comes back to the floor. Madam Clerk, with that big old long mouthful of stuff.
I don't think we're going to have a report out, so we're going to...
Yeah, let me let her go through the whole thing, and then we'll, yeah.
Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine A. PW Fund B Development LLC and Buzz Oats Construction, Inc. versus the Solano County Airport Land Use Commission, County of Solano, Solano County Department of Resource Management, NDOs one through ten, Solano Superior Court, case number CU twenty-four zero seven zero two six. Conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Solano County Representatives, Director of Human Resources, Niger Edwards, Charles Sekai, Sloan Sekai Young, Wong, LLP. Assistant Director of Human Resources, David Pak. Human Resources Manager, Nick Balalong. County Administrator, Bill Emlyn. Assistant County Administrator, Ian Goldberg. And Assistant County Administrator, Debbie Vaughn, with various employee organizations. Conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Section Government Code five four nine five seven point six. In-home supportive services authority. Representatives are the same as previous, and employee organization is SEIU Local twenty fifteen.
Thank you. So with that, I don't believe we're going to have any reports out, so we will be doing the board reports, if any of the board members have anything that they'd like to share before, because we won't be coming back. Monica, do you have any closing?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Oh, you're getting it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I'm extremely concerned with what's going on with COVID-19. It is showing up in the wastewater in Northern California, and because there's an issue with being able to get vaccines or not get vaccines, and the county doesn't have any money, we're not paying for it like we were before, you're going to have to talk with whoever your particular, if you have, if you have medical, you know, Kaiser, North Bay, or whatever. And if you don't, then it's going to be like a hundred and fifty dollars to get the vaccine. But I do worry, because of what's going on in DC, that people might not be aware of the fact that it is coming back, you guys. I, our employee over here wearing his mask, I get it, but it's not easy, and I want everybody to be very careful, just to let the audience know that there are other things that we do think about, other than dealing with what we spent our, with shit, because that's a very big concern I have. So, I just wanted to bring that forward and have it in the record.
All right, and I have no closings. So with that, we will be going to close session, and we will see you all again at our next meeting. What's that?
It's September...
Oh, yeah, September twenty-third.
Yeah.
Nine a.m. in these chambers.